I will now call the East Lime Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of March 4th, 2021 to order. It is 7:33 PM. This meeting is being held via video conference via Zoom. And for those of you who do not know, our Chairman, Mr. Walker, unfortunately had a family emergency and could not make it tonight. So I will be filling in for his position there. Right now, I'm going to do our roll call. Mr. Walker is not here. Myself, Terrence Donovan is here. Mr. Dwyer. Kim Kay.
Here.
Mr. Peck.
Yeah.
Anne Thurlow.
Here.
Mr. Lisca. Do not see him. Denise Markovitz is here. Mr. McPherson. Also staff. We have Mr. Mahalholland.
Here.
Jennifer, our Savior. Brooke Stevens. And Roseanne Hardy, our ex officio. Also in attendance, we have Attorney Harris. He is connected to audio here. And do we have Petriet Marcou?
Yep, Petriet is here and Alex.
Hello there. Okay. At this time, I would need to sit an alternate for Mr. Walker. And I have a question for the Commission. Seeing that Mrs. Markovitz sat last meeting as an alternate to hear this public hearing. Is there any objection if I sit her again for this public hearing?
No.
None.
None? In this case, I would like to sit Denise Markovitz for Mr. Walker. I will now read the guidelines for the Zoom meeting. Okay? Please remember that while unmuted, we can hear you and everything that's going on around you. We can also see you. Board members and staff will be unmuted during the entire meeting. As required by executive order, everyone must state their name and where they are from prior to speaking, such as John Smith, a board member. Harry White, 123 Main Street, each time they speak. During public delegations, Jen will open lines for comment. Please wait to be called on to speak. Once you have finished speaking, please mute your microphone or phone. During each agenda item, only the board, staff, and presenters will be unmuted to speak on a particular item. Only one person may speak at a time. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be called upon. Board members will be called upon to provide comment via a roll call. Members and alternates, for all motions, in the interest of making sure we have a clear record, please plan on roll call votes so the public and Brooke, taking minutes, can be very clear on the record. Only hosts are permitted to share screens at this time. Any documents to be shared must come through Jennifer at jlyndo@eltownhall.com. As required by executive order, all documents being discussed and reviewed at the meeting must be posted on the town website no later than 24 hours prior to the meeting. This entire meeting is automatically recorded by Zoom. And upon the host logging out, the meeting will cease and so will the recording. The meeting cannot continue without the host. There you go. Moving on, public delegations. Are there any member of the public who wish to discuss any items that are not on our agenda tonight? If so, Jennifer will now open up. Jen, do we have anybody?
We have quite a few members of the public here, so if you can just give me a minute to cycle through. I'm just going to check with each person and see which item they are here to speak about. I have a Dave Peck. If you can unmute yourself and just let us know if you're here for public delegation or a public hearing. You'll need to unmute yourself.
I'm just here to listen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a Nick Rothman.
I'm here to listen also. Thank you.
You're welcome. Someone within Jill iPhone.
Can I hear them?
No, they're still muted. Okay, then I have a Paul Brady. Mr. Brady, if you can unmute yourself and just let us know.
Good evening. I'm here to comment on the potential FEMA look back change.
Okay, I will call on you when we get to that.
Thank you.
And then I have a Brian Wolf. If you could just unmute yourself and let us know which meeting, which part of the meeting you're here for.
Just here to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do see Rich Steele, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm here to listen, but also I'd like to make a comment about the agenda item that's 159, I believe it is, Post Road.
Okay, so when we get to that part of the public hearing, I will have you speak then.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I have someone by phone from a 646 phone number. If you want to unmute yourself and just let me know what part of the meeting you're here to attend.
This is Scott Leahy, and I'm just going to listen.
Okay.
And Jen, I sent in that letter so somebody could read that letter during the public comment. Thank you.
We got that. Thank you. And I think that's everybody.
That is it. Thank you, Jen.
Okay.
That's all I saw as well. Yep. I see Mr. Lisca is joining us now.
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Lisca. Moving on to item number two, which is a public hearing, which is a continuation of application of Theodore A. Harris, Esquire, agent for 159 Boston Post Road LLC, owner, for a special permit for a mixed use in the CA pursuant to Section 8.2.2 and Section 25 at property located at 159 Boston Post Road. East Lime Assessor's Map 31 dot 1, Lot 32. And I will make a note that a few more exhibits have been added to the record, which I will read Exhibit R, which are the applicant's extension of time to hold a public hearing. S, it's a mixed-use building site layout, C200, dated February 12, 2021. I believe that was modified, I believe. Exhibit T is a memo from Victor Bemmi, excuse me, Victor Benny, of February 24, 2021. Exhibit U is mixed-use building lighting plan, March 1st, submitted on the 4th. Exhibit V is mixed-use building plan set C101 through C601 dated March 1st, submitted on the 4th. Exhibit W, mixed-use building plan set C101 through C601 dated March 4th, submitted on the 4th. Exhibit X is an email narrative of changes to plans since last public hearing from Mike Artist. That is that.
There's actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Terry, there is actually an exhibit Y, which was an email we got late today from Victor Benny saying that I think the plans that were submitted at the end of the day yesterday are all set. Bill, you may want to.
Yeah, just briefly, I think when we get into that, I think Attorney Harris will address that issue. He's got a copy of it as well, and the town engineers essentially signed off on the site plan.
I actually did read that as well. Okay. Moving on, and I will ask Mr. Harris for some updates to his presentation. Mr. Harris. You're on mute, Ted. Still muted, my friend. There you go. There you go. You're good.
Great. Glad that someone can hear me anyway. As was indicated, this is a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting of the Commission. As I listen to some of the comments at the end of the meeting and after the meeting, I just want to clarify a couple of things that may be helpful. First, we did continue this twice, but the reason for continuance was not nefarious, nor did we want to hinder the public from attending any of these meetings. The basic reason was trying to make a better product and trying to bring a product to this commission that has a supportive of the staff. And the principal reason that we had to do significant plan revisions was a drainage scheme. We had a somewhat technically advanced drainage system designed for the site. And when Victor looked at it, he, being an engineer and looking for the simplest solution, suggested we, instead of that type of system, use an infiltration system, which required us to completely redesign the drainage system. It was a good idea, by the way. It's what in the engineering world they call an elegant solution. That is, the simplest solution to get to a desired end. If you don't need to be complicated and high maintenance, then why do that? Victor was very familiar with the soils in the area and felt that an infiltration system would work well. So we wanted to redesign that because of the holidays and the COVID situation and inability to meet. We almost made the next meeting, but there were a couple unresolved issues. And I didn't want to bring a plan to this commission that wasn't in full ascent with the staff. And as you see from today, that Victor has indicated that we have met all his concerns and suggestions with respect to the site, and he's basically signed off on the site plan. Another comment was with respect to the minimum size of the apartments. Yes, there is a minimum requirement in the CB zone, but that does not apply to the CA zone. And I know very well, because I drafted most of that CB zone regulation. And there is in fact no minimum size requirement in the CA zone. The only two requirements specific to mixed use are the ones I described at the beginning of the public hearing, which is the 50/50 rule plus the additional parking standard for mixed use. I also want to make a comment on the entrance. I may have misled the commission a bit because we, as I indicated at the presentation last time, we have provided an entrance to the parking area that is 24 foot wide. In my view, and I believe Mr. Mahalholland's view, that is the requirement under the regulation with respect to entrances. That is not the requirement within the parking area itself. And if you note from the plan, we have provided 24 feet to the beginning of the parking area. There is no specific standard for aisle widths in the parking area. But Victor has signed off on this particular layout and this particular width of driveway. And this has actually been there from day one. And I had a discussion with him at the very beginning whether that would be he would consider that an adequate driveway entrance, and he indicated that he did. So the actual alleyways within the parking area do not require any variance or leeway from the commission. We did make some plan changes, however. Plan changes that were reflective of the comments we heard from the commission. One significant plan change was the addition of a sidewalk from the street sidewalk to the site itself, and that is now incorporated in the plans. And frankly, it was a good suggestion. We also clearly striped a walkway along the building as well as a walkway traversing the parking area as well. We've added a sign, which Mike will go over with you shortly, which will indicate that there are pedestrians, and that sign will be at the very entrance to the parking area. And finally, we've added speed bumps. Victor only required one at the very beginning, but we've actually added two on either side of the building. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mike so you can see the specific changes that I just mentioned. Mike, you here?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Good evening to the Commission. I want to thank you for all the good comments that you gave us last time. We took your recommendation into into account and came up with some. See if I can do a screen share here maybe. Grab with me for a second and make sure I pick up the right thing. Can you see that one now? Can you see the site now?
No.
You can't see it?
No.
All right. What about now?
There it is.
There you go.
Can you see my pointer at all? My hands?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So what we did was tried to address your comments. First of all, you can see we put the sidewalk here going up the side of the building here. And then we striped a three-foot wide pedestrian way all the way across the front of the building. And one perpendicular to the building. And we put in speed bumps where you first come up to the building and also on the backside coming from the building, I mean, from the parking lot side. And then to complete that, we put a caution sign right here that says caution slow. I'll show you that sign. That's the sign right there. That's going to go when you first come in the property. So so that was basically four different measures that we took to reduce and increase, to increase pedestrian safety. So are there any questions to that?
Yes.
I was just going to, Mr. Dwyer.
Mr. Mahalholland mentioned the parking sizes were smaller than what's indicated.
No, sir. No, sir. The parallel parking here on the side is.
You are exceeding what he said. You're making them bigger than what is required.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I don't need to put it down to what's required so you have more room. I think it was an 18 by 9.
Well. Can I answer that question, Mike?
Go ahead.
This is James Covin.
Okay, go ahead with James.
The spaces that are in the back and the front are standard size, but those are parallel parking spaces. And they are better if they're 10 feet wide by 22 feet long. It also, it helps the driver maneuver into the parking space. And it also helps by being wider, it helps the passengers.
Bigger is better.
Yeah.
In that area, anyway.
Yeah.
Do I have any other questions from any Commission members? I cannot see my full screen here, so. Anybody? Mr. Dwyer had one. Kim Kay, any questions?
I have none.
Mr. Peck?
No.
Ms. Thurlow?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Denise Markovitz?
Are there still 19 parking spaces?
Yes.
Yes.
That was my only question.
All right. I have a question and a comment. The six-foot wide crosswalk, what is the purpose of that if it just leads to a parking area? Out of curiosity.
You're talking about this one here?
Correct. So I mean, if there's no walking way there, you know, so what that is telling me now, that is inviting anybody who is parking parallel to walk along the other spaces to go to that crosswalk. To me, that basically, I'd rather see it wider in the front of the building if you can do so.
You want the crosswalk to be wider? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't really see the big purpose of it right there because what you're doing is you're inviting all the other, I'll call them clients, as you may say, to go from like parking space 14, 15, 17, and 18, and 19 to walk alongside the other vehicles if they're parked there to go to that crosswalk legally. So to me, that's basically a moot point right there.
Terry, can I comment on that, please?
By all means.
It's also a calming device because if you show that there, then people are likely to drive slower, if you will.
Understood. Okay.
I don't see it necessarily as a negative.
Understood. I got you. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from Commission members? We're good. Moving on to public comment, I will ask Jen. If anyone has a comment, please send a text, not a text, a comment rather, or to speak up to Jen.
I have to ask Mike to please turn off his screen share, though, because I can't see everybody.
I agree. Mike, please turn it off. You're the best.
Thank you. So I'm going to jump to Rich Steele first because I know he wanted to speak.
Thank you, Jen. I don't know if this is too much after the fact. I missed the other meetings on this building. But my understanding is that this project is going to be a teardown of the existing building instead of reutilization of that building. And just as a preference, we already lost one building on Post Road to the Dollar General store. And I just think that it might be nice to keep the nature of Post Road a little bit and not have it be a teardown, but actually just be a renovation of the current building. But again, it sounds like the horse is out of the barn.
Right.
Any other public comment?
Um. I don't have anybody raising their hand, but I would like to check in with a few people. Where did Jill's iPhone go? Mr. Dwyer does have his hand up in the meantime.
Mr. Dwyer.
We have this meeting tonight, Terry, because you had something to comment on.
I am getting there. That is correct. Yes. Yep.
Okay. If any other members of the public want to comment, if they could either raise their hand or type in the chat.
Anyone? No. All right. With that being said, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Harris. As you know, I brought up quite a few concerns of mine at the last meeting. On October, excuse me, October 5th of last year, you went in front of the ZBA to request a variance for the setbacks, citing an unusual hardship of the property. And in those minutes, you stated that makes it difficult to design a building allowing for adequate parking, given how narrow it is. But then you also continue on to explain what the design of the building is. So did you already have the building designed before going for this? Or were you waiting to get a variance and then design? Because to me, I read it as the building is already designed, and then you went for the variance.
Yes, we had a full plan when we went to the ZBA so they could see what we proposed and how it would lay out on the site. There's nothing wrong with that.
No, no, I'm just asking you. I just want to to get it all understand. So you knew it was going to be a hardship from the get-go.
No, let's clarify this. The hardship arose because of the narrow nature of the lot, its pre-existing frontage. That is what made it difficult and why the zoning board of appeals granted a variance. It's because of the configuration of the lot itself. And the application of the regulations to a lot that's designed for a lot that's 80 feet wide minimum on a lot that's 72-ish feet wide. That was the basis for the variance. And the board voted unanimously to grab the variance.
I did, I am aware of that. But I'm also, did you or your client consider maybe a smaller parcel? I mean, that's a lot of building for said property, just out of curiosity.
Well, number one, it meets the coverage. Well, well under the coverage.
No, I understand that. But my concerns is, you know, they informed us that it's probably going to be used as some sort of medical facility. You know, and I have issues with where, you know, like, first of all, no sidewalk. I understand you addressed that with the paint and all that. And where the handicap parking designation is. You know, on most, you brought up, you know, I believe it was 283 Boston Post Road, which is also a mixed-use development area. And.
I brought that up for the parking issues at the parking standard.
Right, and which that has no problem with because you actually incorporated two lots. You know, and if you look at the handicap spot parking on that property there, it is adjacent to easy access to the facility itself. So I'm just curious now, was there ever any thought of maybe like a smaller building to make it?
No. Okay. This was the basic design. It fit the use and the needs for the building. And as you narrow the building, the residential units become somewhat impractical because you start to run into design issues there. This building was well thought out. It fits the site. And in fact, the zoning board of appeals, one of the members came up to me as we're walking out of the building and said, it's a beautiful building and we're happy to see this on the site.
I did see the picture that was submitted to the ZBA and, you know, like last presentation you presented us, you did not even have a final design of the building. So that's why I'm just curious to know.
The same exterior that is in your plans was shown to the ZBA. We added some possible features should Mr. Mahalholland want to adopt them. He had suggested, you know, he suggests various types of architectural features to make a building look better. We have given some alternatives to look at. If he wants to pick some of those, we're happy to do it. We are trying to do the best we can to put a good product on this site, one that will serve the town, serve the residents, and have good utilization of scarce commercial space.
Understood. You know, I did speak with the chairman earlier tonight. As you know, unfortunately, he cannot, you know, join us tonight. And we both have, you know, we are worried about the overflow parking of this complex. If the medical facility does go in there, whether it be an established practice, whether it be a new practice, there's room for expansion. So the one thing that would worry us is the overflow parking on that. So that is just one of Matt and I's concerns on this is the parking. I do understand that you guys do meet all the requirements that was asked of you from our departments, and it goes through our engineers and all that stuff. our departments, and it goes through our engineers and all that stuff. I trust them in what they do and all that stuff. However, I do have issues with that, but I'm only one person. You know, in terms of your variance went for setbacks, and theoretically speaking, you do not meet the setbacks if your proposed locations for your HVAC units are going to be placed on the rear of the building. So, you know.
That's a hypothetical.
It is, I under, listen, it's at the discretion of the zoning, I understand that, but I'm just making a point. Because myself, I am also aware of the situation right now. I'm dealing with myself in another town. But it just, you know, worries me. I mean, obviously, you know, you have met everything that was asked of you. One thing that I did discuss with the chairman, and obviously, this decision would be up to the zoning official and the commission here, is to where that, you know, you really actually only are required to have eighteen and a half parking spaces. Now, we'd be willing to suggest to you to float the half parking space if you relocate that parking for the handicap to the front two spots and incorporate that as a handicapped access area. That way, you're right along.
I'm not sure I follow you, Terry. I, I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm not quite sure of what you're saying.
In the front of the building, what I call the front of the building, Ted, along Boston Post Road.
Yeah, I understand.
We're next to the sidewalk right there. All right. You're giving us right now nineteen parking spaces.
Correct.
Right? Which is a half over what you are required to. So, a suggestion that I would have, if it is doable, Mr. Mahalum and the commission, is to relocate the handicapped parking area to the Boston Post Road side of that building. So therefore, it's right next to the sidewalk and right next to the front of the building. Because if you do look at any other properties, mixed-use or not, to where the handicap parking is, most generally, it is right, easily accessible to the front entrance of such said structures. So, you know, the, the points that I bring up are, you know, they're moot more or less, but I would suggest, if it is doable, Mr. Mahalum, is something like that doable?
I, as an advocate of handicap parking, I always think there's not enough. I don't, it's, you find it in the building code and not in zoning regulations, and I for one don't think it's current, given today's society's requirements. I'm always a fan of doing that. Attorney Harris, I, I would suspect that your team wouldn't have a problem relocating that handicap to the front.
No, I don't think we would so long, I don't think we can go below the nineteen spaces. That's my concern.
But you would re, look at relocating the?
Absolutely. You're sure. Sure. Absolutely.
In my opinion, that might be a pretty good compromise. And we can look at that should the commission approve this as we massage this a little bit further in terms of actually finalizing any last-minute details that we or the commission may have overlooked.
So, excuse me. Sorry, excuse me. Mr. Mahalum, so the parking ratio is something that this zoning commission or zoning regulations require for the structure, right?
Correct.
So, are we allowed to basically ease that a half a parking space?
The answer is unfortunately, no. If the requirement is X, then the commission doesn't have the discretion to lower it because that's what the, the law is, the code is. So we have to meet that as a minimum.
Our, our, our law, zoning, zoning reg.
We're certainly willing to look at trying to relocate if we can, you know, I, I can't tell you we can do it, but we certainly are willing to do that if we can. Mike, do you have any opinion on that?
Uh, yeah.
Whether it's feasible?
It, 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 uh, what, what, what's gonna happen if you wanna put the, uh, if you wanna put the parking in the front of the building, you're gonna go over the, uh, the state setback line?
Because of the dimensioning of the handicap spot?
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, but it, you're right at, you're right at the state setback.
Well, we might be able to get an encroachment permit for that. It's possible.
Okay. If we can do that, then it's feasible.
I, I don't know if we can get that permit, but we certainly would be willing to try.
Define try for me.
File an application with the state for an encroachment permit.
All right, 'cause, you know, both the chairman and I, you know, would recommend that. I mean, it's, it's the way.
We have no issue in trying to do that, honestly.
Especially with no sidewalk from the rear lot to the main structure itself.
It's fine. We're happy to do it. If it, if we can get that permit, we'll do it. And it's, it should be available, to be honest with you, for that little distance.
Do I have any other? Ms. Markovitz? Yep.
If you're putting handicap parking places in the front of the building, don't you have to have enough width there to accommodate a van with a wheelchair that needs to come out? I mean, that, that's, that's not wide enough.
They would.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Widen those spaces by getting an encroachment permit.
Getting an encroachment.
Right. So Denise, right now, they're only required to have one handicap parking space for the amount of parking that they have. And currently, what I'm gonna call out front, which is the Boston Post Road side, they have two spots.
I see that.
That would give you.
Terry, any chance you can turn up your volume?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Sorry.
There you go. That's better. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, my computer has audio issues, so I bought this fancy new headset. So, there you go. All right.
You're talking van with an elevator, I, I assume. You have that elevator for the wheelchair.
Yes, it would be wide enough. Yeah. Mr. Peck.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanna know, the handicap requirements are in the building code and not the zoning regs. But if this moves forward, as, as Attorney Harris has indicated, we'll take a look at that. And as Denise has pointed out, there're gonna be some dimensioning issues, and we've gotta look at the widths. We may be short, and, and Mike, you may know what that is, uh, two or three feet to try to get that actual width for the handicap spot, which is gonna include all the extra dimensioning for width. And as, as Attorney Harris pointed out, he's looking, willing to look to the state to try to get an encroachment permit to pick up those extra few feet so we could get the spot in, but he's gotta talk to the state.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mahalum. Mr. Peck.
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Harris.
Yes.
In your experience, how long do you think it would take to get this encroachment permit?
Well, it's, it's really, it's pretty quick. I, I don't generally do that. It's usually the engineers that do it, so I don't have a lot of experience. But it's, it's done locally in the district, North District. So it's not like you're going to DOT it up in Hartford or something like, like that.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commission members? Any more from the public, Jen? No. George had a question.
Sorry. I would say George had a question, and then there was another comment from Mr. Steele that he commented in the chat. Um, if you wanna let George go first. George, if you wanna unmute yourself.
Okay, um, right now, we have two spots out front and the handicap is behind, correct?
The handicap of what, George? I'm sorry?
Handicap spot is behind the building.
Yes, right next to the dumpster.
Well, what if we just make one handicap spot out front, slide the building forward, and then put another spot where the handicap spot is in the back, or the two spots?
Right. I think Mr. Artist addressed that in terms of the setbacks required from the state. So that is Attorney Harris suggested for an encroachment to where they may be able to do such movement of the handicap space. And they'd reworked the parking to allow for their nineteen spaces.
Okay.
All right.
Um, Mr. Steele, if you wanna go ahead and make your comment, if you wanna unmute yourself.
Thank you. Yes, when, when I hear nineteen parking spaces for a building that's right next to the school entrance, you, you look at the, the Eastline Pizza and the parcel store that, that are next door to this lot, they only have maybe six parking spots there. And I, this is also at a curve. And I just wonder the amount of traffic that's right next to the school entrance, and also the firehouse is, is right by there. It, it just, I, I have a question as to how much sense this makes for that much traffic in that low weight.
Personally, myself, Mr. Steele, I mean, this is something that we thought of. You know, this is a step forward in terms of development to where, I mean, this does not require traffic study. It's going to happen and, you know, they do meet the requirements of our regulations. And you know, unfortunately, you have to go with the flow, as they say.
Terry, if I may?
Mr. Mahalum.
We're all concerned about traffic at, at all times. Boston Post Road is recognized as a state arterial road, which is essentially predetermined that it's, it's able to carry that type of traffic. And as the chair has pointed out, a study is not required. This is considered, with all due respect to everybody's view, as a small infill project. Collectively, the state looks at all that traffic. They're constantly monitoring. As you have seen over the years at Flanders Four Corners, they made some improvements. Further down on Flanders Road, there've been improvements. So, it's recognized that this is their jurisdiction and purview, not that we're not concerned on the local level. We recognize that some of the spots, the pizza spot and others, may not have enough parking. A lot of that, those developments are legal pre-existing, non-conforming. We recognize the schools there. We're all concerned about that. That's one of the reasons the zoning board requires sidewalks that we put in along the street if they're not already installed. And in this particular case, it happens to be there because we are concerned by that. And, and yes, at one time, many of us old timers did walk to school. And there often weren't sidewalks. So we try to promote that always. We do consider the traffic, but we have to be very careful about taking it into consideration officially as part of our approval or non-approval, because if we don't have the legal authority to look at it, we could run into some trouble. But we do consider that as, as Mr. Donovan has pointed out. And I just wanted to note that for the record and for everyone attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalum. Any other comments from anyone?
Dwyer.
Mr. Dwyer.
This isn't like a movie house, all driving in at one time and leaving at one time. This is sporadic hot traffic. It's, it's not, the, the comment doesn't apply to this building.
Right. And just for the record, Mr. Steele, some of this was addressed at the last public hearing, which you can find online under videos there. I believe that is correct, right, Jen? Yes. So you could go back and, and listen to that as well, because it was addressed back then as well. At this time, if there's no other comments, I'd like to thank everybody for the participation. I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Kim K., do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dwyer. All those in favor, I will go around by roll call. Mr. Dwyer, in favor?
May I?
Kim K.?
Yes, I.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Ms. Markovitz?
Yes.
Myself is an I. Motion carries to close the public hearing from six-zero-zero. Moving on to public hearing number two, which is the application of the Eastline Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the Eastline Zoning Regulations, Section fifteen dash one, definitions of substantial damage and substantial improvement to change the time period from ten-year period to a two-year period. I will read some exhibit, let me find my notes here. Here we go. Ta-da. We have an exhibit list. Exhibit A is a text amendment memo from Mr. Mahalum. Exhibit B is a public hearing notice to town clerk and the day published on February twentieth and February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. We have Exhibit C, which is a referral response of Diane Ifcovic, State of Connecticut NFIP Coordinator, DEEP. Exhibit D is referral response of Sam Alexander, AICP, SCCOG, which is South Connecticut Council of Governments. Exhibit E, referral response and questions of the Eastline Planning Commission. Exhibit F is a letter from Boats, Inc. in support of FEMA text amendment, which we'll get read into the record. Carry on. Moving on, presentation by the commission slash Mr. Mahalum. Please.
The, the commission put together a committee, I think of two, and they concluded they wanted to move this forward. And as a result of that, the commission wanted to go to public hearing, so we drafted a change, which is essentially reducing the number ten to a, to two. I will just add that it's my understanding that Stonington, Waterford have all already done so. I will share with you, some of you are aware, I do know inc. zoning, and they are considering going to two, uh, three years. There's discussion. We're a little ahead of them here. And, um, the board looked at this issue, and what essentially happens is, under the statute, you can improve a home in a high-velocity flood zone up to fifty percent of its market value of just the structure over a ten-year period. So if your home's a hundred thousand, you get fifty thousand over ten years. A lot of thought was that that was somewhat, that's with time and experience, which we've had this regulation place for several years now, I think it's come forward that that ten-year was overly restrictive. And there are views on both sides of the issue. When we changed our regulations several years ago, as mandated by the state, they gave us essentially a menu to choose from. There was a core set of rules that we had to have, and then there were some additional ones that we could choose from. At that time, we chose to go to the ten-year, which was the most restrictive. And what we had found, it previously was one year, and what we had found is that people were applying in, uh, in December of one year, and then again in January, essentially beating the system. And the purpose of the substantial improvement is to allow people in those zones to maintain their property. The federal government recognizes that. But the ten-year rule is essentially, and, and that rule is also trying to encourage people to elevate their buildings. Some people can afford to do that. Some people cannot afford to do that. If you buy a home in that zone, you may immediately wanna remodel the kitchen and the bathrooms. Well, there goes your budget for ten years. What happens to the exterior house? What happens if you need a boiler or a, 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 a fuel tank? Can you maintain the exterior of the home? So there's been some pressure on that side of the argument. In discussion, it was concluded that Eastline would try to go to ten years and entertain that. I had also talked to DEEP about it to Diane, whom our, our letter will be read. I believe, Terry, you're gonna read that letter in. And she also.
If you'd like me to.
Yeah, that, I think that one, I mean, they're all part of the record. But she makes a very good case and discusses it. Her letter refers somewhat to climate change, et cetera, which is not necessary in law, and we don't know quite what the state is going to do. In her letter, she essentially said, you can do these activities. So in a nutshell, that's pretty much it. You can debate either side of this. However, with that said, ten years is pretty restrictive. You know, we, we all own homes, most of us, and maintaining a home can be expensive, and if you could only afford to do so many things over ten years, your home may start to deteriorate a little bit. And as I pointed out, not everybody is in a position to elevate their homes, and there's not federal money really to come along and say, we'll help everybody do that. And then what can happen is some of the exteriors of these homes can become a little blighted-looking because of the lack of ability to maintain them if you're investing in things like kitchens, boilers, and, and roofs. So, as I said, you can debate either side of it. Our process was to go to hearing, and we kind of consider this in the zoning world as a housekeeping issue. Um. And that's essentially where we are. I don't know if uh, anyone else on the, if someone on the commission has anything they want to add, Mr. Peck or or George. I think you were the subcommittee members, if I remember that correctly. Uh, Norm, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Yeah, I can add one comment. Um, we are, uh, we're addressing a hardship with business owners and people. Number two, uh, this commission is charged with, among other things, the protection of property values. And if we have a regulation that discourages people uh, property owners, spending money to maintain their property. Um, then we are discouraging, we're not helping support the values of property. I believe this, among other things, uh, this change will will help. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Mr. McPherson?
I concur with um, Norm's uh, assessment completely.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. So, Mr. Mahaland, shall I read your memo into the record? Did you basically sum it up? I'm sorry, Mr. Dwyer.
Isn't the elevation required if you destroy, uh, fifty percent of the house is uh, destroyed? Isn't that required by uh, FEMA?
Yes, if you go over the fifty percent, you cannot go over the fifty percent value. But if the home is destroyed, then you're going to end up with an elevate, depending on the on the zone you're in. And you're probably going to end up on peers, depending on the base flood elevation. And when we look at the BFE, and then we have to look at the, you know, the topography. We look for elevation certificates, we get the engineers involved, and the lowest beam in the house has to be out above the base flood elevation plus one foot in a high velocity zone.
Thank you.
Ms. Thurlow?
I just have one question. Well, I think this is great, but I'm wondering why two years and why not one year? What's the advantage of two years?
The um, I, in my view, my experience, as I noted earlier, party A will come and apply on December twentieth and get his fifty percent approval. Then next year, January second, he comes in and asks for another fifty percent. He would be legal with a one year. I think um, we also want to encourage people to comply and to elevate where we can. I, in my opinion, the one year is way too lenient. Um, but that's just my view. Um, so I think that's why we went to two year, um, where it encourages you to comply and do certain things. And it prevents that uh, cycle of coming in at the end of one year and and applying the very next year.
Mr. Mahaland, I have a question for you. Um. Uh, somebody asked me a good question, which I thought, uh, this is, again, this is just a question. So again, if this does get approved to go to the two year period. So in that two year period, I homeowner improves their property, say like forty five percent, whatever. They're meeting the guidelines. Then we get hit with a major storm. All right? That falls, you know, basically only leaves them with five percent of their property that that they can improve. So does that also fall within this two year period? Or is that a separate circumstance? Again, this is just a question for my clarification.
What's your, to your question is, is um, they've got a problem. And they have a hardship. And that's why we have a zoning board of appeals in which they would apply for variance and relief of that section of our zoning code. Or to comply with FEMA's requirements to elevate their home up on peers on a rebuild. But if, as your example, if it's five percent, then I think that he would be going to ZVA, and I think he could successfully, in my opinion, argue hardship. And and most likely obtain a variance.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Mahaland? Seeing none. Any from the public, Jen?
Um, Mr. Grady, I think, wanted to speak.
Thank you, um, everyone. Uh, I um, will try and make this real to you. Uh, I am a new East Lime resident and the Commodore, the Niatic Bay Club. Uh, we're a family oriented organization whose mission is to promote sailing and seamanship. The club was founded in nineteen forty and the current clubhouse was built in nineteen forty eight. We have an active youth sailing program that is open to all members of the community. In a typical year, we have a hundred children participating in our programs. NBYC is not a pretentious club. Our clubhouse is functional, uh, but pretty basic, uh, fitting with our family orientation. The East Lime's current ten year look back period is a challenge for a small club like ours that has a goal of keeping membership affordable. Uh, this summer, a family membership is about a twelve hundred dollars for the year. We've just spent a year looking at what the FEMA ten year look back period means to us. Uh, we started by taking a a look at our building and identified the deferred maintenance uh, needed. Uh, even with some volunteer labor, we need to spend over a hundred thousand dollars just on things that would be considered maintenance. We also looked at the cost associated with tearing down the clubhouse and replacing it with one that is the same size and has similar functionality. As you can imagine, there was a big expense associated with that. And we were worried that we would lose our membership base if we raised dues to the level needed to support a new building. So at this point, our plan is to prioritize and slowly work off our deferred maintenance list. May take us five or six years. No, the building won't look the best, uh, but we want to minimize the chance that we will have to tear down and rebuild it if we incur storm damage. If the look back period were changed, we expect that work would be complete within two or three years. Something that we think our neighbors would like to see, and we'd be happy about it too. So um, I'd just like to sum up that we're in support of the change from ten years to two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Jen, any other comments?
Um. I don't know, Mr. Rothman or Mr. Wolf, if you wanted to speak?
Not for me, this is Brian. No, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I also have Dave Peck. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
No, nothing to say at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Jen, I do have a letter here from Boats Incorporated that I will read into the record. Uh, pardon me here for one sec. Stated March fourth, twenty twenty one, to the East Lime Zoning Commission. My name is Scott Leahy, and I am the owner of Boats Incorporated, a marine dealership and marina located in the Anax since nineteen fifty nine. The reason for my letter is to express my support for changing the FEMA look back period from ten years to two years. The current look back period has made it very challenging for us to maintain and upgrade our facility to the standards encouraged by the boat manufacturers we represent. As you know, should we make investments in our facility that exceed the fifty percent FEMA cap on a ten year look back basis? We would be required to bring our facility into full compliance with FEMA flood regulations, which would include raising the structure above the base flood elevation. As a marine dependent use, it would be impossible for us to operate a marine sales and repair business in such an elevated building. We recently embarked on a renovation at Boats Incorporated. Our decision to invest in our facility was born out of necessity. Our desire to upgrade our image as well as invest in beautifying the town of Niatic. FEMA's fifty percent rule and the ten year look back period have clearly hampered our scope of plans. These impediments discourage investments by business owners and homeowners to property, excuse me, to properly maintain and even improve the integrity and safety of their structures. I believe a strange, excuse me, I believe a change to a two year look back period would also encourage businesses and homeowners to make necessary investments in their structures through the appropriate town building approval processes compared to those who have made such investments without the necessary permits because they no longer have capacity under the FEMA fifty percent cap. A change would be a catalyst for residents and business owners to pursue immediate investments they had previously held off on resulting in additional revenue to the town in the form of permit fees and property taxes. In addition, a change to a two year, a change to a two year look back period would make East Lime's provision comparable to Waterford's two year provision and closer to Stonington's one year provision. This change would level the playing field and would no longer put our properties at a disadvantage when homeowners or business owners are making a decision as to which town they, excuse me, they will move to or invest in. I believe this change is essential to encourage East Lime residents and business owners to invest in their properties and the community, and to continue to make this town such a great place to live and work. Sincerely, Scott Leahy, Boats Incorporated. I will also read a letter from. What's her name? Diane Ifcovic from Deep. This is dated February twenty third, twenty twenty one, to the East Lime Zoning Commission, care of Mr. Mahaland. Subject, proposed tax amendment, East Lime zoning regulations, section fifteen point one, flood hazard area definitions, substantial damage and substantial improvement. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resources Division of the proposed tax amendment to section fifteen point one of East Lime Zoning's regulations in your letter dated January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, and received on February eleventh, twenty twenty one. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. General statutes, excuse me, CCMA, Connecticut General Statues, sections twenty two A ninety through twenty two A one twelve, inclusive, and offers the following comments. The proposed tax amendment seeks to alter the definitions of, quote, substantial damage, end quotes, substantial improvement, specifically changing the current ten year timeframe to a two year timeframe in both definitions. In order for the community to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, East Lime must adopt the minimum regulatory language as required by the Federal Emergency, excuse me, Federal Emergency Management Agency, as outlined in forty four CFR five nine point one and sixty point three. For the substantial improvement definition, no timeframe is specified in forty four CFR fifty nine point one. However, FEMA defaults to required minimum one year timeframe to calculate the cost of improvements to a structure. When the cost of improvements are tallied over a longer timeframe, it drives the mitigation, elevation of older homes not built to current flood pain construction standards. By decreasing the timeframe, the community is allowing the expansion of structures that are already flood prone, bringing increased risk to life and property. And that is not recommended. The CCMA Coastal Flood Hazard Policies underscores this by requiring local decisions that, quote, minimize threats to life and property, end quote. As well, see CHA fact sheet attached for more information. In January twenty twenty one, the Governor's Council on Climate Change issued its final Phase One Near Term Action Report entitled, quote, "Taking action on climate change and building a more resilient Connecticut for all," end quote. Has a website listed. This plan provides recommendations for improving the state's resilience to the effects of climate change while aligning the municipal, excuse me, while aligning with municipal and regional adaptation efforts. East Lime's lowering of regulatory standards in flood prone areas do not align with the goals of the state's resilient efforts. Changing the ten year timeframe for the definition of substantial damage has a different effect. The standard definition in four four CFR five nine point one does not include any timeframe. The additional cumulative substantial damage clause was added to the end of the standard definition following Tropical Storm Irene in twenty eleven and Superstorm Sandy in twenty twelve to allow properties damaged by multiple flood events in a ten year period to be able to qualify for the increased cost of compliance benefit through the NFIP flood insurance policy. ICC provides up to thirty thousand dollars to assist with elevating, demolishing or relocating a structure that has been substantially damaged. Normally, substantial damage that has been, pardon me, substantial damage has to occur in one flood event. By adding this cumulative clause to the definition, it allows multiple damage events to be tallied together to reach the substantial damage threshold more quickly. DEEP advises not altering the current definition in order that property owners may access this financial assistance in the future. However, this is optional language that the community may remove. So as you see, page two dash seven to two dash ten of the FEMA publication, increased cost of compliance coverage for more details. Website listed. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in Connecticut General Statues, section twenty two A dash one zero four sub E, which requires that any zoning regulation or changes thereto affecting the area within a coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of the Connecticut General Statues, section twenty two A dash ninety two, and the criteria of subsection B of section twenty two A dash one zero two of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environment Protection at least thirty five days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposal's consistency with the policies of section twenty two A dash ninety two and the criteria of sections twenty two A dash one oh two B of the CCMA. Should you have any other questions regarding this letter, please feel free to contact me, Diane Ifcovic. Pardon me. Mr. Mahaland, did you want me to read yours as well?
Uh, no, I'm I'm fine, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I also have Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. This is via electronic mail dated March first, twenty twenty one. Dear Mr. Walker, I am writing in response to an application to amend the zoning regulations of the town of East Lime. The application was referred to this agency in correspondence dated January twenty fifth, pursuant to section A dash three B of the Connecticut General Statues. The proposed zoning text amendments seek to modify the definitions of substantial improvement and substantial damage to reduce the look back period of the same from ten years to two years. Based on our review of the material submitted, I do not believe the proposed regulation amendments will result in a negative intermunicipal impact. Any questions, please feel free to contact me, Samuel Alexander, Planner. Yee-haw. Uh. We have a letter here from Planning. Is that correct, Ms. Mahaland? Shall I read that as well?
You uh, read the, what the other Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, gotcha. Dated March second, twenty twenty one, to Mr. Matt Walker, Chairman, East Lime Zoning Commission. Regarding the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission for a tax amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations Section fifteen point one, definitions of substantial damage and substantial improvement to change the time period from a ten year period to two year period. Chairman Walker, the East Line Planning Commission, at its meeting of February ninth, twenty twenty one, began review of the above referenced referral for consistency with the twenty twenty Plan of Conservation and Development. The Planning Commission had several questions regarding the proposal that were unanswered, excuse me, unanswerable based on the materials forwarded as follows. One, how many homes and or structures are affected by regulation? Two, why a two year period versus some other timeframe? Three, will the change affect the town's rating within the CRS program? And four, how does the change improve coastal resilience and sustainability and account for climate change at sea level rise? As the zoning commission's public hearing on this matter is scheduled to open on March fourth, twenty twenty one, and the. and the Planning Commission's next regular meeting is scheduled for March 9th, 2021... Excuse me, 2021, yeah. Addition to the application being a Zoning Commission-initiated application, I am respectfully requesting the Zoning Commission consider continuing the public hearing on this matter to their next regularly scheduled April 1st, 2021 meeting in order to allow the Planning Commission any additional time to review... That's a little typo, pardon me. The proposal, answer the above questions, and forward a determination to the Zoning Commission prior to their rendering a decision. If you have any questions, please feel free. Director Planning, Gary Geischo, submitted, Michelle Royce Williams, Secretary. And I believe that was it. Okay. Denise, should you say something?
No, I just...
All right. Pardon me here. Had to do all the reading tonight, that's killer. All right. Any other questions from the Commission?
Is Mr. Malholland going... Is Mr. Malholland going to answer that Planning Commission letter?
Um, I will make a comment. I spent an hour with their staff explaining these positions, and they have had the referral as long as the other agencies, and I think they've had it, Jim's at six weeks or so. With all due respect to everyone, the answer to the question in CRS, I am certified CRS and it should not affect our rating. Our town engineer also applies that program. So I don't see that as an issue. The climate change issue was, I think, addressed in the DEEP letter, which I think most other things were addressed there.
So your opinion, that's been answered.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
As do I, yep. Any public comment? Moving on. Thank you, everybody, for the participation. I will take a motion to close public hearing. Anyone... Mr. Dwyer approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Peck first. I will go through by roll call. All in favor, Mr. Dwyer? Kim K.?
Hi.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Thurlow?
Aye.
Mrs. Markovitz?
Yes.
Myself as an "I." Motion carries 600. Moving on. Regular meeting. Application of Theodore A. Harris, Esquire, Agent for 159 Boston Post Road, LLC, Owner for a special permit for mixed use in the CA pursuant to Section 8.2.2 and Section 25 at property located at 159 Boston Post Road, East Lime Assessors Map 31.1, Lot 32. Open for discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, it's Kim Callagene, and I just wanted to note for the record that I did not attend, was unable to attend the meeting, the last meeting, but I did review all of the minutes and got myself up to speed on this particular topic, so I feel qualified to vote.
Thank you, Ms. K. Any other discussion, anyone? Nobody. I have, you know, you heard my concerns in the public hearing, and I will stick to those concerns. I do hope that Attorney Harris does pursue the encroachment and try to relocate the handicap parking to the front of the building. Personally, I do not why they... I do not understand why they're trying to put such a big building on a non-conforming lot. You know, if you know that you are going to construct a building on a said property, you know, you would think you would do your best to try to meet. Not saying that they don't meet, but to meet and have a little bit of leeway. You know, I have concerns with the parking, as does the chairman of the overlay, but also, you know, in terms of like... They are at the minimum with their parking, you know, and you have the snow removal aspect of it. You know, they have an area designated for, you know, a stockpile of snow. But being in the business myself of snow plowing back in the day, I know that's not how it's going to work. And one of the concerns that I would have with the way that this is presented, you know, they have, you know, their stripes painted out in the front of the building there, and they have the parallel parking alongside the fence, so you really don't have a lot of room there. So for the snow removal, it would go back and it would probably consume up maybe two, three, possibly even more, depending on the winter that we would have in terms of snow removal. So therefore, you're losing some of that parking as it sits right now, as it is presented to us. So then where are these, you know, either tenants or clients of said businesses going to park? The snow that would be piled up along said property on the side and the front, not... Excuse me, what I'm calling the side is actually the front where the parallel parking is. You know, it depends upon the weather. We live in New England, and we know that, but I think it's something that we have to take into consideration, because it can happen, and sometimes it does. I know it does. That would be concerning to me in terms of if this is ever fully occupied, in said businesses and tenants, that parking would be at the maximum. So where are these vehicles going to park? You're going to encroach in on the traffic pattern of the proposal, the way it sits now, which in turn, I know they proposed signs in terms of pedestrian traffic, but now you're pushing the traffic. Granted, it's not going to be a lot of traffic, but it's there to have the two-way at the same time to where it's going to encroach in on that walkway. That is just my biggest concern of the issue. Why, you know... Why such a big building for said property if you know that you have a property which is not conforming to begin with? Why not design a building that fit the property more adequately and have better, quote-unquote, "parking," or whatever it may be?
Economics.
I'm sorry?
It's economics, money.
I know that, I know that.
You gotta go broke.
Yep, Mr. Peck?
Yes. I respect your opinion, of course. But this project, I'm not excited about the side, that side area walking alongside cars coming in and out. However, this project is legal, it's up to code, follows all our rules, and if you don't like the rules, we gotta change them. So I don't think we can do anything but approve this and move on.
Mr. Peck, I am in agreements. I do agree with you, and I will address that second half of your statement you made a little bit later on. Ms. Thurlow?
Oh, I guess I'm not as concerned about the parking as you all. Maybe because I work across the street in an office building with 45 agents, which is next to an apartment building and probably around the same number of spots. The parking lot is almost always empty, because no one's there at the same time. There's maybe four or five cars there at one time, and I've never seen a problem where there wasn't a parking space that you could find. So, you know, I just think it's probably unusual to have that everyone there at the same time, that's all.
I agree.
Can I just, you know, passing along my concerns, that's all. Any other comments?
Gary, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Little bit.
Other comment?
Little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Well, but...
We can hear you.
You did get that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little better.
There you go, all right. Sorry, I gotta learn where to place the mic.
It went down again.
All right. Can you hear me now? There we go. Do I get a motion to approve or deny? Said application.
I'll make a...
A second.
Mr. Peck, motion? Mr. Dwyer? Second. I will go around for all in favor.
I didn't read my motion.
Let him read it. He hasn't stated the motion.
I'm more concerned about my mic. Mr. Peck, please go ahead.
I move to approve the application of Theodore Harris, Agent for 159 Boston Post Road, LLC, for a special permit for mixed use CA pursuant to Section 8.2.2 and Section 25 at property located at 159 Boston Post Road, East Lime Assessors Map 31.1, Lot 32, with the addition, with the added condition of moving the handicap parking space to the front of the building if an encroachment permit can be attained from the state.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, we need to also add, if you're making that type of motion, and perhaps Mr. Peck will allow for it, we must include exceptions as provided for in Section 24.7.
Mr. Malholland, I was just about to mention that myself. Mr. Peck?
I will let you continue then, thank you.
Do you mind adding? This motion must contain the following exceptions as provided in Section 24.7, 24.6E-3 Buffer Strip, which is substitute a fence for the six-foot buffer along the northerly and easterly property lines.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Dwyer, does your second still stand?
Second then.
Okay. Now I will go around. All those in favor, Mr. Dwyer?
Prove, yes.
Kim K.?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Ms. Markovitz?
Yes.
Myself as an "I." Motion carries 600. Mr. Holland, you'll publish this and etc.?
Next, uh, excuse me, we will publish next Thursday. On Friday, we will pick those dates and put them in the... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so just to be clear, that the handicap will be moved to the front as approved by this commission. Congratulations, gentlemen. All right, moving on. The application of the East Lime Zoning Commission for a tax amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations, Section 15.1, definitions of substantial damage and substantial improvement to change the time period from a 10-year period to a two-year period. Do I have any discussion? Do I have a... Anne, Ms. Thurlow?
Oh, no. The reason I was asking about the one year instead of two, I just had several clients that have both sold and bought property right on the waterfront, and it seems like, you know, when they want to redo the inside, like put in the kitchens, bathrooms, redo the floor, it just seems like they want to do it all at one time. So I was just thinking about people wanting to have one mess one time and not have to do half one year and wait two years to do the other half.
Unfortunately, I believe they just have to do it strategically.
But like, but that's what I'm saying, why not be able to do it all at once?
But I think, as was stated in some of the correspondence and from Mr. Malholland is, you have people out there who will unfortunately take disadvantage of the way that it is proposed, if it is a one-year. Like say, so you're in the year, say, 2020, and you do, you know, so much percentage, and then a couple months later, you're in 2021, and you want to do, say, the kitchen, which is more percentage. So personally, I think, like, I agree with Mr. Malholland and the other statements where, you know, two-year is a lot better than 10-year, and if it does go to one-year, I think that, you know, there's gotta be some sort of limitations. Mr. Peck?
Yes, Anne, we also didn't want to be perceived as, you know, taking advantage of this flexibility that we've been given and ignoring the fact that we need floodproofing in town. We thought the one would be, you know, just grabbing everything we can get. But we thought this, the two was a compromise.
No, I mean, I'm definitely for two over 10.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Prove, I move to approve the motion. I don't have the complete literature in front of me.
I can read it for you, Mr. Dwyer. Mr. Dwyer is making a motion to approve the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission for a tax amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations, Section 15.1, definitions of substantial damage and substantial improvement to change the time period from 10-year period to a two-year period. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Thurlow with a second. I'll take a roll call of all those in favor. Mr. Dwyer?
Prove.
Kim K.?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Markovitz?
Yes.
Myself, Mr. Donovan as an "yes." Motion carries 600. Thank you for your work. George, Norm, Bill?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peck?
Mr. Chairman, the timeframes will be the same for publication.
Thank you, Mr. Malholland. Mr. Peck?
There's a little bit of cleanup that needs to be done, and no sense in getting into it now, but it doesn't affect the substance of what we just did. Just some housekeeping, that we will have our little committee get together again and present a little tweakage of the...
So basically crossing the Ts, dotting the Is?
Yes.
Right, okay. I don't think there's an issue with that. Uh, moving on. Approval of the minutes of February 18th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Thurlow moves to approve the minutes of February 18th. Second, Mr. Dwyer. All those in favor, again by roll call. Mr. Dwyer?
Yes, prove.
This is for... Approved, yes. Mr. Dwyer?
Proving the minutes.
Kim K.?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Markovitz?
Yes.
Myself as a "yes." Motion carries 501. Approval of minutes, February 18th. Moving on to old business, we have none. Moving on to new business. Item number one, any business on the floor, if any, by the majority of the vote of the commission. Anyone else besides me? No, all right. I would like to, as you know, I did bring up at the last meeting regarding, you know, the dates required on the signage for public hearings. I believe Mr. Malholland is working on that, is that correct?
I am.
All right. Also, you know, we're talking with the chairman earlier this evening. You know, the wave of the future is development, you know, and it's going to happen one way or another, whether in a CA zone or a CB zone. So right now, my question is, what is the difference between a mixed-use dwelling unit and a mixed-use development? There, we have no definition in our regulations stating what a mixed-use dwelling unit is. I think it's time, you know, and the chairman agrees with me, to where we look at our regulations, you know, and maybe incorporate some sort of, you know, like how we have the downtown village aspect of Dyannic, to start looking up at the north end of town. Because as we know, development is happening up there, and I think it's something that we should address as a commission. Either, you know, because yes, we have a lot of historical buildings, and, you know, we also have a lot of dilapidated buildings out there. So the time is going to be coming forward to us in terms of development, excuse me, developments. So I think it is time, if the commission agrees, that we take a look at that zone out there, whether if we come up with another district in that area, or to go over our regulations and make sure that everything is fair, no matter where you are. Because as you heard tonight, you know, there are no minimum requirements for apartments in a mixed-use dwelling, in a CA zone. You know, so I think it's... a mixed-use dwelling in a CA zone, you know, so I think it's something that we should address, and hopefully some of you agree with me in that. Mr. Maholland, is that something that you think we should look into?
Well, certainly it's a commission decision. There are, there are actually, with all due respect, there is a definition of mixed-use development in our definition section, so, you know, I'm not sure, you know, we, we adopted the CB mixed-use regulation that the commission adopted for CB, and then you subsequently adopted it in CA with some different tweaks to it.
Actually, Mr. Maholland, I don't mean to overstep you here, but, you know, a mixed-use dwelling is what is allowed in CA, so my question to you is, what exactly is a mixed-use dwelling versus a mixed-use development?
Well, I mean, that's something we can talk about, we can look into, we need to look at the lexicon that's in the code right now to make an analysis of that, that I don't have off the top of my head, but, as you know, we're constantly looking at the regs, constantly tweaking them over time, we've had many amendments, and certainly I'm happy to look at that and report back to you, or whatever the commission chooses, or whenever they choose.
I mean, I, again, I strongly do believe that it's something that needs to be looked into, because you cannot stop development, you know, as we all know, you know, down here in the Nyanic section, it's going like wildfire, and it's gonna happen up north there. It already has started, and I think we need to take a look at it. Zoning regulations were adopted for a reason, and yes, you're right, it does have to be tweaked from time to time, but I think it's time that we take a look at it, given the development that has been going on up north. Ms. Thurlow?
Oh, I just had a question, where are we, or what's ever happened to the other small stores that were supposed to be around Costco?
That's the Gateway thing, that's phase three now, it originally was phase two. I'm not sure if you were on the commission then, but they asked to move their phases around, so.
They're still planning on doing smaller shops in that area.
Yes, so that technically is phase three, George, I see ya, that technically is phase three now of their application, which includes a bridge and another access to the apartments and townhouses in the back, which as most of you know is one of my sore spots. George?
Ms. Mahon, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't all other buildings on hold until the highway is built?
Yeah, I was gonna comment, we're wrapping up the current phase two and the gravel pit operation. I think there's an expectation that a little later in the spring we'll be finished with this phase of the development, and anything further, there may be one or two infill lots along Flanders Road that they may, and I, we've gotta proof that out, maybe they may be able to develop, but by and large, it's on hold waiting for the state of Connecticut to come in and repair the bridge at Exit 74, and they are going to dismantle that bridge, widen Flanders Road, widen I-95, and redo the exits and entrances again, it will be an arduous process, but the bridge is apparently somewhat unstable, and give it, they will need to do those improvements before Gateway can get on to any more major development, so there'll probably be a lull for a while, as we saw when the retail market collapsed a few years back, everything kind of stopped. So this is obviously a long-term development, essentially it started in 99, 1999, and, you know, here we find ourselves in 2021, and, you know, that's the major development in town, other than that, you've got the infill, like, as you approved tonight, and then the affordable housing stuff, which as we've all learned is really a state mandate and difficult for us to deny, we have denied some of them, but that is, is difficult. So the Gateway's going to be on hold for a while. So George, you're correct, and Terry.
Ms. Maholland, is that what you were gonna say, when you raised your hand before?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else agree with me in terms of taking a look at the regulations for the CA zones?
Sure.
Anybody?
I think we all should.
Mr. Peck?
Yes, why not?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it's my understanding that the commission does agree that we need to look at our regulations in terms of the CA zone and development and that part of town? Understandably so?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Maholland, there you go. Do we want to form a subcommittee now, later, or what is the deal?
We, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, do we want to wait for, for, for that?
I actually, Mr. Maholland, I did speak with him like I mentioned before, and he is on board with that, he actually is the one who brought that up to me while we were on the phone, because, you know, development is gonna happen one way or another, and we have the buildings on north end of town, so I am fortunate to know that Mr. Walker is in favor of this, from speaking with him earlier, it was actually his idea.
Perfect, so you might want to do a little subcommittee now, it's up to you, Chairman?
I would like to be in that subcommittee. Anybody else? Mr. Peck?
I'm a Nyanic guy.
You're a Nyanic guy. Anybody else? George? Anybody want to join me, or is it just gonna be me and Bill?
Go ahead.
Alright.
As an alternate?
Cause I'm a Flanders guy.
He's a Flanders guy, right? Denise, I'm sorry, did you say something?
I didn't realize that as an alternate I could possibly do that.
You most certainly can. Yep, you are a member of the zoning commission.
Yeah.
I am.
So that's a committee of three, Mr. Chairman.
That is a committee of three, so it is Denise, myself, and George, who can converse at a later date, I will speak with Mr. Maholland, and we'll come up with some times to go from there. Hopefully we'll be meeting in person soon. Thank you for that. Moving on, zoning official.
Very briefly, we're busy, good job by everybody tonight in my opinion, with some difficult items, as many of our items are. I will point out that the new Mexican restaurant, Nyanic Village, is, is going to try to open probably within four weeks, maybe five, they're closing in, hopefully it'll be successful, I've been inside, it's coming together, they will be doing a patio, in the immediate future, the zoning commission's going to be doing Gen 20, 24 patio permit renewals, so those are gonna be up again. I've got some inquiries about businesses downtown, I think things are gonna take off when things open up later in the spring.
Any deli, any, any delis?
No delis, yes, a possible new Italian restaurant, maybe some other things, some things are cooking over at the Morton House, we'll see what develops. I have something going on at Exit 75, which may come to you, I don't want to say too much yet because we're in the preliminary stages, and it may not get to you, it may not go any further. A lot of inquiries, and as you all have learned over the years, we may get 10 inquiries and one real solid application, but we're busy this spring, and just as, as evidence of that, you know I do know in zoning, I've had one or two people for the last four months, Tuesday night, 15 people showed up, and they were all in a hurry with all their personal applications, so I, the spring has started, and the spring push is starting on my level, and we continue to be busy, I think it's a good sign economically for Nyanic and for the community. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland. Comments from Ex officio. Mrs. Hardy, are you there?
I am, good evening.
Good evening.
This has been a very interesting meeting, I'll make my remarks brief, because I'm pretty well exhausted from all the budget hearings that we've had in the last month and a half. So the Board of Selectmen approved the budget and forwarded it to the Board of Finance for further discussion. We made a few reductions, tried to keep things in line, thinking of people with COVID and other problems, we're pretty, we're doing pretty well with payment of taxes and back taxes, so, but there are still a number of people in the community that really are on kind of tough times. One of the things we did do last year to try to save money, we cut a lot of the funding to what I'd consider public service groups and the Historical Society in particular, Historical Societies, and we were able this year to restore all of that, restore all of those short budgets, I call them, they don't ask for a lot, but they certainly add a lot to the community and the life of the community, so I'm glad we were able to do that. Of course, as you may or may not be aware, the Board of Selectmen can only make recommendations on the Board of Education budget, we cannot make any, any reductions, that falls on the lap of the Board of Finance, so we did, we did make several comments, and the comments will be forwarded, but the entire town and Board of Education went forward after last night's vote with unanimous vote from all board members. I'd also like to just mention, if you're not aware, that this coming, this coming week and the next week, Restaurant Week in town, and you, I'm sure all aware that the restaurants have been particularly, specifically, it's been very hard for them, so I'd like to encourage zoning members to take a look at the various restaurants on both sections of town that are offering specials over the next two weeks, either take-in or eat-in. Unfortunately, we can't go in large groups, but I think if you, today's paper, newspaper, today's London Day had an article on it, and also listed a lot of the restaurants that were offering specials, and I believe that there is a website listed there so that you could look in advance or order in advance, but if you're doing that, I think if you wouldn't mind just addressing yourself as a public official, you don't have to necessarily say you're on the zoning commission, but just identify yourself as a public official and that you are specifically supporting local business and Restaurant Week. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Comments from the zoning board liaison, there was no meeting, next up is Kim K. for March 9th. Woo! And moving on, comments from the Chairman. That's tonight, I think it went well, Roseanne did mention something that I was gonna mention, it is Restaurant Week, to where they are offering, you know, takeouts, and some have dining. I know the state is lifting its restaurant capacity limits, I believe it's on the 19th, so they'll at least get one day of full capacity going from there. I would also like to pass along my thoughts and prayers to Mr. Walker and his family. Hopefully everything will work out well, go from there. Other than that, I just ask you to please be kind and be safe.
Bill has his hand up.
Mr. Maholland?
I just want to note, spring is here because the DQ opened in Groton, and I'm anticipating DQ opening here in a few weeks, so spring is here.
Spring is here, and it's gonna be 60 degrees next week, so let's hope.
Yes.
Other than that, anybody else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Anybody make a motion? Mr. Dwyer, second.
Adjourned.
And Thurlow? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry on. Thank you all.
Bye, everybody.
See you next time.